We call the order of strategic planning for Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. Left the record show that all Alderman not present. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous committee meeting held Tuesday, June 7th. Could I get seconded, please?
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Witt. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carried. So, we do have unfinished business, but considering that we have a guest here tonight, I'm gonna come back to those PLs and unfinished business because our engineering consultant charges us by the hour, so I wanna, I wanna get to the splash park rendering and give the council an update. So I just wanna, we do have Jason Hayden on the line with us. Jason, are you there?
I am. Good evening, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Jason. So he's, he's here to, obviously, he's been working with Vortex, with the mayor and our staff to put together the plans that are before you. So if you guys wanna turn your attention to the, I promise it's not super lengthy, but I wanted to do my diligence to give you an update. We do have the renderings now as well as a price tag. So, here we are. We've got a solid layout. All of the surveys have been done, and if you recall, the original proposal was to put the splash park within the footprint of the War Veterans Pool area, and it, it fits beautifully. And so, primarily, the spray area is kind of exactly the layout that we've, we've already talked about, looked at. The only change here, all of the real infrastructure can be housed within, we took a tour of the facility, can be housed within the, the internal pump rooms. A wall will get knocked down, and they'll be able to put everything right there. We don't need to build another external structure, except there will be a cement pad. And a cement pad, I believe, will be for tanks. Jason, is that correct, the cement pad that's outside the fence?
So the, the, the concrete there that's being shown would be utilized just so that it protects the piping that actually runs below what potentially could be for vehicular traffic, and that there is a vehicle needs to get into the spray pad.
Okay, so, so there is nothing above ground there. That is just protecting all the piping that goes underneath that area. Is that, is that correct then?
Where, yeah, where the, where the gate entry is currently on the, the pool deck will be, it, that will remain a gate, and that will provide access for vehicles in the event that they need to get in there. There will be a small pad outside of the double doors where the current utility room is, and that will be utilized for counter storage for the filter treatment.
Okay. Okay. The, the, of course, the, the main benefit here is still no real major land disturbance or prep work needed, and that helps us to kind of save money in the installation phase. So, here is the overall design. It, it looks very similar to what I brought you all those months ago, the, the West Moonfield project. It does have changes in it, it has kind of, what they've done is they've taken the requests that we've had, we've given them to include a separate area for more of the younger children, the older children, and everything in between. And they've put our unique colors, a lot of the fuchsia and things like that. Just one thing to note, and I, we wanted to get some feedback, that this was the original city logo, and the mayor and I, we were able to get them the new downtown logo, and that, that's on a slide coming up here, but our thoughts were to go, as we're kind of rebranding ourselves in our downtown area, to, to, to run with that, and I think you'll, you'll agree when you see it on the giant dump bucket there. So just very, very similar to photos that, you know, renderings we've looked at before. And the good news is, really, we stayed right on target as far as the financials go, the estimates for all of the material. This also includes, Alderman Witt had brought up the idea of some of the lighting, this, I believe in this bid, you'll see down here, there's about fourteen or sixteen, I think it's fourteen, I, I do have it on a slide here, of the neon lights throughout the splash park. Yeah, fourteen. And so, in the evening, it, you know, these, the addition of these really actually helps to extend the hours of usage. I mean, it stays light throughout the summer pretty, pretty late, but it really is gonna add an extra, you know, bit of ambiance there to really showcase our investment. So, as far as the material breakdown through Vortex, this is through the NPP process, which again, we've reached out and discussed with NICOM. It, it allows us to record a discount of five percent on the project, and it came, came in and rated eight hundred and two thousand dollars, call it eight hundred and three thousand dollars. And I think I do have this slide in here of the original layout or scope of, and we had quoted eight hundred thousand dollars for material. So, we're, we're right there. And then there are progress payments, thirty percent due upon purchase order, twenty percent due at approved drawings, thirty percent due upon shipment, and then twenty percent due at a net forty-five once everything's been installed up and running. Oh, if you can, now, this, this is the picture, this is the dump bucket here with the new logo, the downtown logo on it. And so, I'm not really sure why they couldn't get us one of it upright, but the, the bright colors that are in the downtown logo, so I've asked for them to go in and redo all of the logos with the new downtown logo, and I think, you know, between the blues that are in the logo and the oranges, I, I think it just really stands out and sells, uh, sells the project. So I did keep this, this was from months ago, so we had quoted eight hundred thousand dollars for the equipment costs, and we came in, rated eight oh three. So, at this point, I wanted to have Jason here to talk about the, so tonight, what I'll be asking you to do is for us to make a motion to allow the mayor to sign the purchase order for the equipment on this. The next phase of this, for us to get this order, if we wanna stay on task and keep our project moving along, we gotta get this order in. The, they keep telling us again and again that the equipment, the prices are going up, and if we wait much longer, delay things much longer, we're gonna miss our deadline to try to get this open by next summer. And so, what I brought, Jason, asked him to join us here tonight to give us a little bit of an idea if we still are on target with the, the budget. So when we presented this and talked about it before, everyone was comfortable with the one and a half million dollar price tag, and we've, we've kept in line with our material. The next phase would be to put up a bid, and, and we can go through that same NPP process for an installation for a certified installer. And so Jason's been working on this. Jason, any thoughts as far as the installation cost, the site work, et cetera? I know you've been spending some time on this.
Sure. So, I'm, I'm gonna work my way back first in the answer that everybody wants to hear, and the, the short answer is, we will be right around the one point five million dollar mark, according to all of the information that we have today. So, to put your minds at ease, yes, I believe that that one point five million dollar mark is a very attainable number, and we have built in a few contingencies to, to that number in the event that these inflated costs that we're seeing for construction carry into this project as we would expect. In addition to that, we've also included roughly sixty-three thousand dollars of what we call field change allowances, and what those are is, what, what we find in the ground sometimes isn't what we see from, from the surface. So, occasionally there are unexpected costs as you start to dig, and you wanna make sure that within your budget, you have some money set aside to account for some of those unforeseen conditions. So that, that money is included in the one point five that we, we're estimating here for the total project cost. In addition to that, we've also included the twenty-five thousand dollar landscaping line item, and that, that can be used in a number of different ways as the, the city sees most appropriate, but we're, we're using that as just a lump sum placeholder until they get into some of the finer detailing of exactly what they may like to see for, as far as vegetation landscaping surrounding the, the facility. As part of the installation costs, specific to the storage tanks, the blaze structures, the piping, and the filtration systems, and any other items that are included in the Vortex components, we're expecting that to be approximately a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the installation of all those features. That is also included in this, in this budget area. Beyond that, your, your biggest cost, which should be no surprise, would be really your concrete installation. That is a substantial bond, you're talking almost three hundred thousand dollars amongst all of the components for, for just the concrete alone, and that's really the, the volume of the remainder of the budget. So, when you look at removing the existing concrete, putting in the new concrete, that's a substantial component of, of this project, to no surprise, a substantial percentage of the budget. In, in addition to those items, we did include a fence, that's, that will be a complete perimeter replacement around the entire perimeter of the fence, and I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that, because it is something that we discussed, whether it remain or, or be removed, because it's, it's not required by law, but it is obviously the thing that we'd like to do to protect our assets. So, so that's included as well, and then there's some ancillary items in here for seating and fertilization, survey and mobilization plus that we have to have in all projects like this. So that's kind of a rundown of how it breaks out. We did run this past Vortex today to make sure that there weren't any major contingency errors or things that we may have overlooked, and the general consensus on their response was that it, it looks pretty comprehensive, that they're pretty comfortable with the requirements that we're showing, and it, that they were, they did question whether or not we included the overhead and profit in the prevailing wage rates, and all those things are included in our budgetary numbers. So, in, in case anybody's concerned about, you know, wages, that, and how these things are, are actually estimated, we do include all those, uh, those items within our, our prices.
Okay, thank you very much, Jason. So before I turn it over to questions, as far as what our next steps are, I've kind of alluded to that. What I'm asking for today is a motion that we approve the mayor to sign the purchase order of the equipment. There is a, if I'm not mistaken, mayor, was it about a twelve week lead time, did she say, on, on, on that equipment?
I believe so.
Yeah, and our goal is to break, break ground this fall. We need to get moving on that. Also, ask the, the mayor as well to work with Jason on the installation quote, that would be obviously another side of this too, next steps, and then the securing of the additional monies. So, in the original scope, we had set aside five hundred thousand dollars, and then also asked for a million dollar bond payable over fifteen years. And so, the, if you remember, the debt service came out to, I wanna say maybe about seventy thousand a year, which should be covered by the revenue generated through this project. There is a variety of different stages, I'm sorry it's kind of small, and there is a various limited warranties, everything from, everything being covered from one year. Most things are covered really in three years or less, and there are even some longer term items, you know, workmanship, things like that, that are ten years or twenty-five years that I've included in this, this slide here. So, at this time, I'll, I'll stop talking and give an opportunity for any of the council to ask a question to myself, the mayor, or Jason. Alderman Witt?
Yep. Everything sounds, you know, like it's, it's both steam ahead. My question is, with the concrete, does that include filling in the present pool? That's not a separate item?
That's, that is actually correct. So basically, the, the, the construction estimate would include removal of the concrete in the pool right now, on pool. Filling that with compacted stone, bringing that up to grade, and then putting the concrete for the splash pad over top of that space.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman McColl?
So, I was actually really glad to hear, because I had written down fencing, because, you know, I, I didn't remember seeing that in the drawings, and all of a sudden I was like, how are we gonna liability wise? So, pretty much, that, that whole area as we envisioned it would have some sort of fencing. Do we?
Yeah, I think that is, I think that's probably the consensus for, for everyone, although under, because it's a splash park, technically you don't need a fence, but to protect our investment, I, I think that's probably a wise idea.
Well, plus if we're gonna charge admission, we have to have some way to funnel people in.
Yep, good point.
The only comment I have, John, is I want us to be real particular about, you know, whether we get a contractor that pushes us to try and do work, maybe whether they shouldn't. You know, since I've been on the council, I've heard a couple instances where things that got done seemed to come back and bite us, because it went into whether the, either concrete shouldn't have been poured, or maybe fill wasn't, was an issue. So, I just want us to watch for that and be sure we don't rush it to hit that deadline and end up with a problem.
Yeah, there's one way to guarantee that it's gonna rain for days and days and days out, and have the city of Ollyan start pouring concrete, and then guaranteed.
Yeah, do you have any thoughts on that, Jason? As far as, you know, the timeline, the schedule, is it still feasible to, to, to break ground at this point in the fall, or, or what are your thoughts?
So I would prefer to break ground this fall and get all the concrete removed from the space, then put in the stone and compact it, and if they, they do not have a good stretch of weather, let it sit, let it compact, let it compress, and let it consolidate. That's actually the best possible condition, and then when we do have the appropriate weather, whether it's a full week in October, you've been surprised by things, you know, that for these, you know, the last couple years, you, you then do your installation of your concrete and, and put in the, the components of the, the spray features whenever it makes the most sense. That's, obviously, at that point, you've already run all the utilities where they need to go, and the only thing left to do at that point is to fasten those bolts for those spray components and run the tests for the water to actually go out of there. We don't need, nor do we want to leave any water in those lines over the winter, obviously that's why we, you know, winterize those components. So, would I rush getting the components installed this year? I don't think you need to, especially if you're not slated to do the opening until the spring of next year anyways. You know, that, that's, these are all very, very valid points, and as long as you're, you're all in agreement that you wanna open in the spring, I think it makes the most sense to get as much done as you can that works and not rush the final detailing until it's necessary.
Okay. Any other questions? Mayor, any comments?
We're just, your, your vote tonight is just to purchase, your purchase order with Vort, Vortex.
Correct. Correct. Okay, seen no questions. So I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to sign the purchase order with Vortex. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried. And, Bill, is that, you think that's, that's, meets what our needs are for that?
You need to do it next, next week at the council meeting.
Okay, a formal resolution?
Yeah.
I, I have no problem with that. This should signify a verbal authorization.
Yeah, we have acted on that verbally many times before, so I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
And there's this follow-up with, with the resolution.
Make sure that happens, Tiffany?
Yep.
Perfect. All right, thank you very much, Jason. Appreciate your time, and we'll be talking soon.
Okay, and as always, if any questions come up, feel free to send them along.
Thank you very much. Okay, very good. Next up, we do have unfinished business to bounce back to, and we have PL 46-22 by Alderman Anastasia to authorize the sale of city-owned alleyway off of Van Campin Avenue to a private citizen. Would you like me to? Alderman Anastasia, sorry.
Yeah, I contacted our city assessor, and I think I copied all the other ones, too, to ask him that he would do a search to see who actually owns that property, and according to Greg, he went back to the eighteen hundreds, and the city of Ollyan does not seem to own that stretch of property, that twelve feet alleyway or whatever, whatever it is. So Greg said he was going to try to put it, I believe, if I'm explaining this right, on the tax rolls for next year, and have the county foreclose on it, so that way the county could probably do a, a title search, find out who owns that, and it's gonna be probably two to three years down the road before we decide, before they decide who actually owns that. I did talk to Mr. Fornis this afternoon, he, obviously, he's not too happy about that, and I told him the only other option he has is to contact maybe his own private attorney and do a title search, or contact the Catteryst County Clerk's Office to see if there's any records up there. I also talked to Jack Hertz this afternoon, a great man, and Jack was in agreement with what I just mentioned. So I just probably would make, I don't know how this procedure really would work, but these PLs, but make a motion to.
Postpone indefinitely. Indefinitely. Yep.
Can we get an answer to that?
If it's gonna be years, we should probably consider tapering.
Postpone indefinitely.
That kills it too?
Yes. Yes. So you have that motion?
I'm not in a committee, so somebody else.
You're not?
Yeah, so, somebody else.
All right, motion is made by Alderman Witt.
Sorry.
Seconded by Alderman Pannas. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, PL 46-22 is postponed indefinitely.
Did the mayor have any additional comments? You wanted to say?
No, that's what I was, I was gonna tell you to say what Greg found, that's all.
I don't think it's good, at least it's a motion to do something with it.
Can't sell with some of ours.
All right, so next up, we've got PL 58-22 by Mayor Ilio with the common council, as the agency determines that the Forest Hills Phase One paving project is an unlisted action, and that after full review of the short environmental assessment form, have determined that the project will have no significant impact, and therefore declare a negative declaration. And so, if you recall from a week or two ago, we had some developers from the, that own the land up there at Forest Hills, looking to, to start to build homes up there, and they've come to the common council to ask to pave the remaining parts of Inwood and Woodview up there. And so that coincides with PL 59-22, but two separate ones, so we'll just start off with 58-22. Mr. Mayor?
We have Kerry Purker here and Ryan Reed, the coates, to, I guess, to answer here. I think the class got as much questions on this to answer questions on.
Very good. Hi Kerry.
I'm sure what questions you may have, but I'm here to answer anything.
So if anybody has any, I'm, I'm pulling up, because I've been sent, I just pulled up my email with my list of questions. If anybody else has any, please, by all means. Alderman Robinson?
I'm, just off the top of my head, I, I remember the, a couple weeks ago, last week, they had mentioned that the Seeker, I'm trying to get my thoughts together, the, the environmentally there would be no impact? And then after reviewing the minutes from the previous time that this was brought forward, even though it was, situation's a little different, there was mention of environmental impact from erosion, encroachment to wetlands, and I don't have my glasses on, among other things. What's changed?
I can, I can answer every one of those. So, as you may recall, I believe it was 2018, it was a different property owner, and the environmental that was prepared for that was a full environmental, and it was for an entirely different project. That Seeker, the common council was to be lead agency, and you all had referred it to the planning board, and the reason being is that project did not fit with the covenant, and the Seeker had to do with lot line adjustments to fifty-five, it would create fifty-five lots, and the impact would be far greater based on the patio that they were trying to build. So it was in July of nineteen eighty-seven, our common council at that time reviewed an environmental that actually had to do with what the project would be today. So that environmental work was done, and they're adhering to the exact thing that came before the council, and that we have on rocker, and I double-checked, I sat with Jack Hertz a week and a half ago, and we looked through it, and he was actually the city attorney at the time, and it was neat to see the correspondence, and Seeker was, you know, kinda knew the city then, and he saw the permits from a firm in Buffalo. It was all done to the letter of the law, and what these people are proposing is as well. And if you look at what's in this, really, the overall project scope, and not the paving Seeker, it's not including those few parcels that the other owner would have compacted. So they, they totally left those off, so what would be before the council for the overall project scope absolutely appears, and the planning board had made the recommendation that an EIS be prepared, which is an environmental impact statement. So that's saying, hey, we find some things to be adverse, because it's not adhering to the use of the land how it was originally looked at, and it would be detrimental, and if they could prove otherwise, please go ahead, and they couldn't, and they didn't. So that's why that project stopped, among the covenant and other issues.
So along the lines of the road itself, from the different minutes, there was documentation of the constituents up there being worried about traffic increase, which would obviously happen with the paved road completely, and then they were concerned with the curbing in that area. They, there were, this is a quote, "No interest in turning to a city street."
Based on the 2018 news?
Yes.
Because there would be so many homes. So what is in the environment from eighty-seven is the exact number of homes. It was determined back then that it would not be an adverse impact, it would not even be a moderate impact, because they would be adhering to the covenant in the very limited large parcels of land and homes. So that.
And I did have one more thing, which I, I didn't write down, but I know it was something that I considered the night that it was brought forward, was that before, I just believed that we should have some homes placed first, or at least something there investment-wise before we start to invest into that area with putting a road down.
Okay. So, so I, I, what I would like to do, for the sake of that, that's gonna be, I think, discussion number two, right? So, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Kerry, we could, we could determine, right, that we agree that there's no impact and vote in favor of PL 58-22 without being ready to vote for the actual paving project. Correct? One, one PL is a Seeker saying that we've reviewed and there's no environmental impact, and the second is a PL to actually have the city of Ollyan pave those unfinished roads up there.
Correct.
Right, so, just so we don't get caught, I think, in, in the mud on this, maybe we can try to, even though they are directly correlated. um, maybe we can try to, even though they are directly correlated, uh, just at this point in time, let's just kinda focus on, you know, um, fifty-eight dash twenty-two and then that is exactly a, my point two, Brandon, um, for fifty-nine dash twenty-two. Uh, as far as, there's a lot more details that I wanna get, um, that we need to hear about, uh, to authorize the paving of that.
Maybe I can help with that because something else that we need to also consider
Sure.
is our subdivision regulations. And we also need to consider past practice, what we've done there. Um, it's really not uncommon. We just did it with a hotel even. You know, we, we put down the base. We waited for the top coat. So that way they could haul the materials to build that hotel. And, um, the city was completely involved in building of the road. And, um, that's how that was done and the other phases for the paving was done prior to the homes being built. And then, um, do you wanna add to the subdivision stuff?
Yeah, I don't want me to add now, or do you want to move on?
No, both of you, why not?
So the issue we run into that though is we can't issue building permits until we have in place a fire act or escrow. So if you wanna wait to build that, that road, that house also because we can't issue that building permit until we know that there's actually gonna be a road that will support our fire vehicles up there. So if they decide to start to mill the block and build up there, that's well, well over the hundred feet of fire safety as well as, God forbid, somebody get hurt working on the roof. Most of your fires occur during the construction process. But like Kerry said, the subdivision regulations, you also have the right to require them to put the money in escrow up there.
Oh.
The money in escrow for what?
The whole paving project. So, and, and if I could just add my two cents, it's like, you know, we are always looking for development. Here we are and, um, even, I mean, God forbid this development not for, or go belly up, we would have a road and the city wouldn't have paid two-thirds of it. And that would give, thank you, that would literally give a normal citizen a better opportunity down the road to save their foreclosed home. And I wanted to go build a home up there. I'd have a better opportunity because I wouldn't be paying for that road and I might have a better chance to develop and build a house myself because it's one less expense and I can get there instead of my builder. So there's other avenues. It's like if you are literally being handed two-thirds of project costs, it's like what I do with grant funding, take it. And that's my opinion on it, um, just.
Now, what about in the, in the base and the, or the top coat and the curbing to be wiped out until the fine touch and still count for the fire access?
As long as you mean to, and Witt, in the support of a fire vehicle?
I care less if there's curbs up there. I just need my guys up there in case something happens.
Can you, can you show where, where is that?
It's gonna be fire code section five oh three point two point three.
Kerry?
Yeah.
Um, I know years ago when they did the development of, um, like Stardust and Gemini. I know when my husband bought our house up there, excuse me, um, he was still paying for two streets. That's how it was paid for. And that policy or that procedure for the city to do that, and I'm assuming they did the same thing. They put the base down and then they finished it once the development was there. Um, when did that happen? Was it, I think I asked Tiffany. It was like nineteen seventy-something that the city put that policy in place.
Okay, I don't know. I could ask Jack, I'm on.
Yeah. I think it was seventy-one or seventy-four. So it's been in place for a long time.
Yeah, I know it's followed that with Forest Hills and the reason being is I had the files from the East in my office and I went through it and made sure we're still in line.
Right.
And I did that back when it was in twenty seventeen, eighteen, when we were dealing with the former applicant or owner, I'm sorry.
The, the only thing else that I'd like to, to offer, um, I know, let's see, John, Paul, myself, we were the only ones that were here in eighteen, uh, the last developer. But with this developer, um, the mayor and I, Ryan and Kerry, met with them. We've only met with them once, but they've been meeting with the neighbors for like the last year. And I've gotten calls from the neighbors saying, you know, they're working with them, they're doing it the right way. They're, the homes they're gonna build are what they want up there. So if that helps, you know, ease your mind. They have been working with these folks. I've only met with them once because, you know, the city's not really other than the street, um, it's their neighborhood and I feel they should be involved.
No, I can say Ryan and I met with them already once. And the reason being is, um, they were proposing townhouses, which is not conducive or allowed in an R one district. So we had met with the engineering firm and, uh, we worked with them prior to it getting any further that they would adhere to the covenant, which they were not aware of in its entirety and, um, our zoning ordinances and the subdivision regulations. They were, provided that information. They revamped the proposal to what it is today.
So, um, can we just go back to how do we, how do we minimize, and, and I'm, I'm a hundred percent, uh, I wanna see that land built upon. I wanna see it, uh, add to our tax base. Um, how do we minimize, can we go back to the escrow? How do we minimize the risk to the city to being stuck with a road to nowhere and we've heard promises of homes being built and, and they're not built and, and we just coughed out, uh, one and a half million dollars early? Oh, first of all, what was the dollar value? I think Mayor, you can send it, one point two million for the, for this.
So our, Alexa.
This is a, uh, estimate by Dave Crandall, uh, and this was based off of the two thousand ten paving of, uh, Woodview. And, uh, he increased by inflation, he took inflation at forty-three percent and it comes out to one point three two seven million dollars for the, for the, the room.
But that's all, that's all in, right? That's the, that's the full top coat and the drainage and everything, right?
Yeah. As I, I sent this, uh, I sent everybody this time and it says everything listed up here, so.
So Kerry, what are your thoughts then? How, how do we protect ourselves?
I would recommend asking the full amount, whether it's the, the one point three two seven billion, or ask for a check in that amount to be held by the city in escrow and then if they don't comply with, um, the timeline, also the agreement that they signed with the city that this is never gonna be completed by, we access, or, uh, we use our powers per chapter twenty-two and we use the funds and we do the city does it.
Yep. And if you think, so it's approximately like four hundred and forty thousand city share and then the other eight hundred and eighty-four thousand approximate, um, it's the developer's share, um, and it would be a road for future development, even if they don't get to all the homes. We have a road. It's more than what we have now and you would literally have a savings of eight hundred some odd thousand dollars. And you would have available options for not just our citizens, but people that perhaps, you know, wanna come in here. And if they are successful, what a win. Like there's our development and, um, housing is development and I think it's very important. We've taken down forty-two houses. Our housing stock, we're depleting and we're not replacing it. And we really need to make that and consider it because we have people living outside the city of Ole Land Limits because they can't find a house exactly one in it. So here we have these developers that have done other successful, um, housing opportunities, different variations, and they're legitimate and it's not per se what we were dealing with, with before. This is a whole different degree and it's professionalism at its finest and, um, it's been quite a pleasure from the time I've met them.
Uh, Alderman, Alderman?
So you talked about putting in escrow, but you said the one point three two seven million, but wouldn't we have them put two-thirds of that in?
We could have them put the whole thing in.
I would rather have the whole thing in a refund, one-third, than try to catch up on two, or the one-third. I'd rather give money back in terms of collecting.
Now, when you do that, and again, you're, this is, I'm not familiar with this process. I mean, you have to, it's not just like a personal check, right? Like it has to, when you, when they give you something in escrow, is it like a cert, it comes from a bank or something? It's like?
The subdivision regulations actually call for a certified bank check.
There you go. Same, I, I like that Ryan, that's great.
And the other thing positive about this group is they're up to date with their taxes on that property.
And they are paying taxes. That was the question, from my understanding, how the community, and they are paying taxes. They have, since they've taken the property over.
I, I checked with Greg and he showed me they are, and they have, yes.
So, alright, so i- is it possible to get wording where we, we receive a certified check of one point three two seven million dollars, right, upfront in escrow until such a time that fifty percent of their homes are, are, are completed or, or what, I, I don't know, whatever the, the council were to decide, is there some way to build that into the verbiage, into the contract?
Absolutely.
And then we release one-third of it back to them and easy peasy. Our risk has been mitigated and, 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 but we're also doing the right thing and putting in some development there, helping them out. I don't know. What do you guys think?
I think it's fair.
It's the only way to go.
Right?
So John, so, we talked about also, um, just doing the base. So would that language also be in there that we would do the base? Because as, 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 um, Alderman Robinson said before, we don't wanna put a road and then we're gonna put really heavy trucks on it and, and potentially ruin it. So can we put that language in to do the base and then upon kind of completion that we would then do the top coat?
Does that make sense?
It's in there. They're interested to do it that way.
Absolutely. And.
Yeah, don't want to jump right to the top.
Yeah, and it's gonna be a city street. So we would do it to our standards and we absolutely have that language. We just did it with the hotel. Absolutely, yes.
Yeah. I remember the last project, it was just gonna put, they weren't gonna put curbing in or anything. So this is a huge improvement.
And it would continue the phases that were always intended with the development and to the city's standards, which are correct.
So we, does this proposed PL get rewritten becomes that language or how does that work?
Well, I mean, I would feel more comfortable to see that contractual language. Uh, I su- I support it, but I, I, I know Jack is the contract master. I mean, I don't know, do you guys already have that contract in place? I mean, is that something that we can re, have we discussed that with the developer? I mean, I, I don't know. I don't wanna throw you guys on the spot, but what can, what can we do here?
I think it'd be best for our legal counsel to speak to the pairs.
That would be, uh, Jack has been in contact with your legal counsel. This is what you can discuss with them.
Okay. So do you guys feel comfortable with me postponing this then, this PL?
Or do?
Until our legal counsel?
Which one are you talking about?
Fifty-nine dash twenty-two.
Okay, so we're gonna approve the first one, but hold off on the second one for legal counsel.
Yeah.
So, do we need to do the resolution that it has to have this wording or can't we just direct it to have?
Well, that's where I'd like to ask our city attorney.
And there's to talk.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, again, I think it's, I think that, that's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Okay? Um, so Mayor, would we be able to circle back with Jack on this? Yes. Alright, um, and as, you know, as soon as that verbiage is in there, I mean, it'll have my support. I think it'll have most of, all of us to work just to ensure that, I like, you know, everything you guys said, right? Certified check in escrow, um, some sort of contingency on there. Yeah. The base coat until things are finally finalized and built, yeah, every, I just, I guess, would like that to read a little bit more and, uh... Or at least to see a contract between the city and the developer that says that.
That might be the better, instead of having all that in the resolution, the contract.
Sure, yep. Agree. Um, in fact, Mayor, that's probably the way to go, just to say we authorize, you know, you to sign it or whatever, you know, however we normally do that type of stuff. If there's a contract that spells all that out, it doesn't have to be in the resolution. It could just, right?
Correct.
Okay, that, that works. Yeah, that works.
So what does Kerry need tonight? Does she need us to approve fifty-eight, don't you?
Yeah, I'm comfortable doing that. To at least show that, yeah, we're, I mean, we're, we're on board. We just want, want to make sure that's made up a little bit.
Yeah, we'll promote next, next Tuesday.
I'll stop to.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, any questions from either of you? Are we on, any clarification, any, anything from us?
No.
Okay.
Is there anything else, the, um, the seeker or overall projects?
Um, yeah, I did have a question for you Kerry. Have to see if they're not bringing that up. See, I, I said we were gonna get on. Um, so, as far as other things that were brought up in, things have, that have changed. Any potential things that have changed since nineteen eighty-seven, the first time the seeker was done? Um, the last time around, we did talk about wetlands and endangered, I don't know, species and stuff like that. Any concerns with putting in a road with these issues?
No. Um, the seeker from twenty eighteen that had a concern, it wasn't about the road. It was about the intensity of use.
Okay.
Um, doing the lot line adjustment and putting in that many homes in that area.
Okay, very good. Um, good, very good.
And John, if I remember, there, there were four lots that were near the wetlands that are not going to develop at this time because that'll be a more lengthy process.
Yeah, yeah, we, they would have to get in contact with the DEC, the DE, or the US Fish and Wildlife. They have to come out and survey and tell them where they're allowed to go. The roadway that posts this against is a hundred and sixty-seven feet to the roadways where, well, over what US Fish and Wildlife, the fires.
So those few lots are just on pause right now until they, um, do their proper due diligence and then they would come back to the city with that piece of the project.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions then? Alright, seeing none. So motion was made by Alderman Witt. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Pannis, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright, uh, PL fifty-eight dash twenty-two is passed. Um, I'll entertain someone to, I'll go ahead and make a motion to postpone PL fifty-nine dash twenty-two, um, until the next strategic planning meeting. Um, second is made by Alderman Witt, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, PL fifty-nine dash twenty-two is postponed. Thank you. Um, okay. So, uh, next up, new referrals for consideration. The mayor and our engineering consultant, um, Bob Ring Senior and Kerry have been working on receiving contracts or bids on dog park equipment. Um, and so we received three bids. Uh, this was not originally, the installation was installed and it was included in the scope of the Oak Hill Park project. Uh, but the actual equipment itself was not, um, that had been removed. We thought we could just go and purchase it through, uh, a, a provider who said they were a sole source provider, um, and was, Bob Ring Senior and Kerry did some research and said, no, we've gotta go out and get three different quotes. Um, we received three different quotes and Terra Bound Solutions, uh, which was the, their, their high-quality product, uh, came in as the low bidder of nineteen thousand five fifty-seven. Um, as, and I do have the copies here if anyone wants to see them, uh, as compared to Adventure Playground Systems, uh, for twenty-one thousand three forty-eight and then Park Warehouse, twenty-seven thousand five fi- five ninety-one. Um, and so, um, Bob Ring Senior worked with the mayor. Each quote is for the same concept, a small dog, kid, a big dog, obstacle course and, and those types of things. Um, and so what I'm doing here tonight is asking, uh, the council to authorize, uh, the mayor to, uh, sign the purchase order to, uh, purchase from Terra Bound Solutions, the low bidder here. And then the next, uh, item here coincides as a fund transfer, asking twenty thousand dollars from our fund balance into the Oak Hill Park Capital Fund to nineteen, um, to, to purchase this equipment. Questions? Okay, seeing none. Um, Mayor, was that about right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, seeing none. I'll, uh, make a motion to authorize the mayor to, uh, sign a purchase order. Alright, seeing none, I'll, uh, make a motion to authorize the mayor to, uh, sign a purchase order with Terra Bound Solutions. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alden Robinson, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, um, the, you know, four ayes and one nay. Uh, to authorize the mayor to sign the, uh, contract with Terra Bound Solutions. Next is a fund transfer, again, to pay for this, um, I'll, I assume we'll we'll need a formal resolution. But, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the fund balance, the general fund balance to the Oak Hill Park Capital Fund, the number two nineteen, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alden Panis, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that passes board one, and with a formal resolution for next Tuesday. Does that work? Okie doke. Any other comments or questions, uh, committee?
Just clarifications.
Sure.
At, uh, outside the the PO, it's like we've done in the past, but the money won't be able to transfer until the formal resolution is done.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's correct, mayor. Okay, uh, no committee reports, I'll make a motion to adjourn, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alden Witt, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried, we are adjourned.
Okay, um, Jack, do I do finance now?
Um, you're you're the chair. But it's just, uh, my, I'm going to just postpone this indefinitely, so.
Okay. Well, that will pass.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to order the finance committee, let the record show, all members are present. Um, I'll make a motion to approve any minutes from Tuesday, June seventh, can I have a second?
Second.
Alden Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, Carrie, finance and bills, um, unfinished business, new referrals, PL sixty-one dash twenty-two by Alden Proffert. Um, to authorize the transfer of thirty thousand from capital fund, one fifty sidewalk improvements to newly created capital fund, two, two twenty-two homeowner rebate program, can we grant a postponement?
Yeah, we we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, talked with Lenz, uh, because we're in the middle of the sidewalk program this time around, and he was able to kind of find the the, uh, the money previously that had just loaded to the general fund. Um, the idea was, let's do this the next time we we fund the sidewalk program. Um, it would be, from an accounting standpoint, too difficult to, uh, to transfer the money right now. So he's, he's kind of got it figured out, um, for this season, and then next year, we'll set up a separate capital fund that is just a homeowner rebate program. So, yeah, um, postpone it indefinitely.
Okay, do you want to make that move?
Sure.
And I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Carrie? Okay, um, Carrie reports, we have none, and I'll make a motion to adjourn, can I have a second?
Second.
And Alden Panis, all in favor?
Aye.
And then last is Ruth and Rec, um, let the record show, all three members are present. Uh, approval of minutes from Tuesday, May third, two thousand twenty-two, I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other opposed, Carrie? Unfinished business, we have none, new referrals, um, just a citywide update, what I wanted to do is just let everybody know that, um, the parks are looking better. We have some summer help that's out there weeding and doing the trim work. Um, disc golf over in Franchot seems to be, um, a big hit, we've been over there several times ourselves, and you can see other people, especially kids, have been over there. And I think, uh, part of the program that, uh, Rich set up was to be able for kids, or anyone actually, to go to the library and rent discs if you want to, to go play, and then you take them back. So I think that's going to, really going to enhance the park down there. Um, the other thing is just all the parks seem to be moving towards our summer programs. Um, the pool is going to open up twenty-second, and I think last that I talked to the mayor and Chris, we have ten lifeguards, so they should be staffed appropriately. Um, the senior center, as far as their activities, they've had several trips, uh, bus trips that have gone great, and they're doing wonderful over there. Got concerts in the park, they're going great, so the activities for Ruth and Rec are doing really good, I'm sorry, losing my voice.
Um, thank you. I have received requests, um, on more than one occasion, to ask the city to include, uh, portable toilets in King Street Park, as well as Gargoyle. Um, as the the bathrooms are not open and and as we. Let's face it, we try to activate our park spaces, uh, and use them, whether it's for frisbee golf, or, um, I know, I think there's T-ball or something that takes place over at King Street Park. Uh, there there are residents who are there with little kids, um, and if, you know, we need to set aside some funding or something, I I don't think they're that expensive, uh, would that be a possibility to include in our parks?
Sure, yeah. And and Gargoyle, the, uh, when the, uh, the, uh, disc golf is down there, they have keys to rest them.
Well, when the league gets, right, but what about when people just go with their stuff to practice and?
We tried, uh, in the past to leave them open, but they get destroyed, but maybe, uh, maybe a porta john will be, uh, I'll check into pricing and see what we can do there.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I've, I've been waiting for us to talk about bathrooms again, because the last time I was in DC, um, and I know it's DC, but we're talking about bathrooms here. They were proposing fifteen million dollars for fifteen bathrooms, uh, for those who can't do the math, that's a million dollars per bathroom. People hated the porta johns, that's literally what my next line says. Uh, the issues, uh, wasn't the cost, uh, as they were talking about on the news, and it wasn't about paying that much, but it was about keeping them locked, and that's literally what we're doing. We we had bathrooms here, we're keeping them locked. The crime is much higher in larger cities, but we're, but we're locking up the bathrooms here in in Little Olian. So, you know, now that we're talking about doing a porta john, you know, I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, I'm, I don't have a problem with putting porta johns in in certain parks if they don't have the facilities, but if they have the facilities, why not open them? Let them be open, maybe assign someone to go down there and add. If the park is open from six to ten, then the bathroom should be open from six to ten. If if that's what the rule is, I know when I was downtown DC, when I used to work down there, they would shut down the park at ten PM or eleven PM. You couldn't go down to, uh, any of those monuments or anything like that, but the bathrooms were open until that time, and then they closed, they are public bathrooms, so I just feel like it's a shame. I would, I would jump on the bandwagon with Anastasia on anti-bathroom if we're just going to build them and then keep them locked. That's just my thought.
I I I totally agree with you, I think, um, like Gargoyle Park, um, you know, we have them, why are we paying for another one? That's silly. And by the way, the porta johns, they get messed up too. People tip them over, people, you know, go in and just make them a mess. But I think, I think we're a mess, it's silly, we're, we're actually charging our taxpayers twice. They're paying for the park, they're paying for, you know, they have a restroom there, and now we want them to pay for a porta john because we don't want to be responsible for our own toilets. I think that, to me, doesn't make sense.
I don't understand why we can't get some kind of technology that, like, automatically locks them and unlocks them at certain times. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be like some control room somewhere where we're flipping levers to open and lock, close them, but I would think that in two thousand twenty-two, you know, we can, uh, we can have some kind of automated system where the locks can self-govern themselves.
We talked about that before, so.
So actually, I think that's a great idea, but I also think that's a challenge with homelessness, right? And we've been talking about that too, and and I think.
I've heard of going to bathrooms.
Right, I'm I'm not in disagreement with you, but but knowing what to expect. Um, I would say I'm I'm in agreement too, uh, I was at a meeting just across the street at Lincoln, and a police officer came over three times while this group of like thirty women were there to check the ba- I must have been checking the bathrooms, because came and looked in the bathrooms and looked, I'm like, does he want to lock them? So, you know, I I think that you're right, having some kind of rotation or a system where you can, you know, Alexa can probably lock them for you.
Right.
Well, so, I don't know, committee, but something, you know, we've got a lot of technology, right? Those scooters, you use their licenses, like, get on there, I mean, it would seem to me like, uh, you know, you could, not that you can control who goes in and out, but like, it's, it's, hey, you know, if you want to unlock them, you sign up through the website or through your phone somehow, someday, and you can unlock the door, and then if the place is destroyed, the police know who to go talk to.
I like the, there's one, I saw it on Instagram somewhere, but it's like, uh, all glass bathroom, and when they, I'm serious, and when they go in, there's some kind of, there's some kind of like electrical current that runs through the glass that turns it all, like, uh, which is not transparent, what is it, like, you know, solid? Yeah, you can't see through. And then, uh, you know, when they're done, they open the doors, and it's, you can see right through again.
Yeah.
So some.
There you go, mayor.
So that would be the top of all quotes.
The restrooms at over at Lakehead Park have been, uh, they are open, uh, some, when the parks come in the morning till ten o'clock at night. And the, uh, police department, uh, is going over there checking periodically, because we've had, uh, we've had homeless, we've had them in there, and, uh, and, you know, and, uh, they, uh, they leave them a mess. We're not saying the homeless do, but people leave them a mess. So just the presence has helped out over there.
What do the homeless do, like, when they see the, when you say the homeless, what are they doing, go to the bathrooms?
They get washed up.
They, uh, leave it less than pleasant to go into after them. Okay? So, uh, I can show you some pictures of them.
Yeah, 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 sure.
So anyways, but, uh, you know, we've, uh, I I think is, if you go back in in time, uh, we used to have what was called the park police. It was a civil defense. And they would work all summer long, and and they would go and drive around the parks, and they would be the ones that would lock up the the restrooms that we did have open. Forne's, uh, Marcus, uh, that, we don't have them now. So, uh, I'm not opposed to, uh, you know, we'd have to hire someone to do that, I don't want to really, I don't want to tax our police department going down to, uh, to, uh, Gargoyle and and checking that and and there, but but there's no reason why they can't check Forne's and possibly lock them up at night, Bob too. Or we can get some, one of the summer help maybe to come in and do that, because then if it's a mess, they can clean it and do that, so, so that that is a possibility. We can, uh, you know, we can get Forne's opened up, we can get, we can, we have this over here opened up now, down at, uh, down at Franchot, that's open until the, till the, uh, the pool closes. And then if people rent the facilities, they're given a key also to to the restrooms. So and and sometimes that that's okay, other times it's it's not, so, but we could, we could get back on that cycle.
I forgot about those park police, I remember those, so, I mean, that would be good for security too, another eyes on there.
It's just, uh, there's no interest there in, uh, getting something like that going again, we tried over the years and, uh.
Was that a volunteer program?
Yep.
Yeah. I think Paul's been, like, more time when I was saying he was coming up.
You know, that's a great point.
He doesn't have an election.
Jackson, the job.
I would love to, uh, take on that chat.
We'll give you a clap, we get a vest, you get a, like, a yellow vest, you have a uniform, a uniform?
I am looking for a side hustle.
And, uh, you know, and that that was back, uh, they were foreign back in the days of civil defense. And, uh, and then they evolved to park police, and I think the city used to give them a thousand dollars a year to, uh, for their membership to whatever they needed to do, so.
One of the things I did is I shared some information with the mayor, and I had Jason look at it, and, um, there were these porta potties type things, they're called Portland Blue. And what they are is they're, they're made out of stainless steel, and what they do is, a lot of the big cities have them, particularly because of the homeless. And they're open, they, they're handicap accessible, um, and the park people, you basically, you hook into the water system, you just spray it down. It, you know, and graffiti, you can get off. The other thing, um, I have a packet of information I can show you guys, but the other thing is, they have on the outside sleeves, so you can do advertising. Um, I, I learned about them when I was in Burlington, they have them in the parks up there. And actually, they're beautiful, at night, there's a blue light on them, they're solar, um, and on the bottom, it's open, as Paul suggested, it's about maybe eighteen inches you can see in. So you can see what people are doing, and it's, it's really interesting, but if you look up, if you're on the internet, it's Portland Blue, and I went when I was in Portland, um, a few weeks ago, actually, they were closed.
Portland maker, Oregon.
Oregon.
Oh, boy.
And, um, that's where they, that's where they make them. But they're really, they're interesting in all kinds of cities, um, in the United States and other countries have bought them, but originally, they built them because of the homeless. They wanted, um, someplace for them to go, wash up, use the restroom, and then they could wash it down, it's easily taken care of. Uh, the other thing, they have, um, in some of the big cities, they actually have a, um, a needle dispensary that they put in too. So they're kind of all around for the general population. But, um, I used a one in, um, Burlington, and they're very nice, they're, they're well-kept, and I've talked to the parks, um, director up there, and she loves them. And they are, I think, the one that they purchased was between seventy-five and eighty-five thousand. So they're not cheap, but they're durable, you know? What you do is you put a cement pad down, you can bring your water and sewer up through, and then you hook it in, and it's set right into your own system. So they're really interesting, so I, um, I forward you to that information. Any other suggestions on the porta potties?
No, I I think that having summer help do some of those makes a lot of sense, um, you know, from a cost perspective too, right? But I'm in agreement that having them all.
Yeah, I I think that's, I think if we got them, that's, that's awesome, and in fact, they'll, and, I mean, I don't know what we pay the summer help, but that could be a job in itself, right? For one summer help person to drive around and clean the bathrooms every day and and check on them and open them and and close them at five o'clock or something, I mean, I don't know, but.
Get a city scooter. Electric scooter. Let them ride around and.
The helmet.
Well, not that their price is there, that's more than gas.
Yellow vest.
You put a basket in front for.
No city vehicle, scooter.
Yeah.
That's right.
Hard help.
That's right.
Put it on their backpack, while it's in the road.
What was the program with the custodian there, what was it, a funny program years ago? Can't think of his name right now, it'll, it'll come to me. He was always carrying a plunger and, uh, and that with him, so.
Okay, um, so that's the update on the parks, and if you, anybody hears any more issues, you know, please bring them forward. And committee reports, we have none, and I'll make a motion to adjourn, please. Ooh, sorry.
So close. I know, so close, right, I should have waited until you both. So, okay, you guys know what I'm going to say, Oak Hill Park, we've all ran by it, it looks horrible, mayor put out the RFP, we got what I don't even call. I mean, it's a, it's, it's a written letter with, hey, here's how much it might cost, um, so I don't know, I mean, something needs to happen in the short term. It is, we're talking about a beautiful park that we're going to have, and meanwhile, people are driving by it, and if you lived by it or I did, we would be throwing you-know-what, so.
If I could interrupt, I'm meeting with I can tomorrow morning down there to, uh, to, uh, the short-term fix.
What about invoking, what about invoking the beautification committee? They've got a lot of really good minds on the city.
I've already, uh, I've already discussed that, and they're not interested.
They're not interested in beautifying other parts of Olian?
Very interested in beautifying, yeah, down there.
But the most historical park in our, uh, in our historical district of history. And they're just disrespecting memory there.
Well, Paul, you know, well, no, wait, you'll be, you'll be here still, so we got to do something this summer. But no, I appreciate.
I got two weed wrappers, I'll bring them on, I'll bring them on.
Oh, yeah, I'm telling you.
I got a battery-powered one, I got the gas-powered one, I might need some of that, uh.
I used the electric one, it was not helping, so I appreciate that, but I don't know what the return solution is because I think that quote was kind of crazy.
What I asked them to do is to take it right down, cut it right down, and then, till we can come up with a.
Yeah, I think that's perfect.
If you size them in a brush hog, I'll do it for you guys if I keep the brush hog.
I think I will come up with a better one.
The one, uh, yeah, you're right, the, uh, what we got back wasn't really a proposal, but it's, it's, I mean, in there is the offer to meet and, well, we're, you know, what is our, what is our level of funding? So if we say, you know, that's just, if we say twenty-five hundred, what is I going to do, you know, so.
Also, I volunteer to do that same job for half of that cash.
We'll come over and help you, I have weed wrappers.
I'll have it done in two weeks. I have it done in two weeks.
We'll try to get some relief up there ASAP.
So are you gonna try to find maybe some other, I don't know what other avenues there are for a longer-term kind of solution, because you did put out the RFP, but.
Well, we can, we, uh, you know, obviously, we're not going to, I mean, that wasn't really a proposal, so we can look at, uh, we can look at reviving it, we can look at, uh, trying to do it ourselves, um, you know, I can, I can ask, uh, some people on that committee, so maybe for some advice there, and, uh, but for them to take it out, I don't think they'll, but advice, yes.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's what I meant, Bill, was just some ideas, I mean, goats, goats are an option.
Well, I do think, interestingly enough, that he did say almost what I did, is to put some rocks up and put some kind of perennials and shrubs, which is basically what he said to do, kind of tear out the netting, put rocks and, so.
Yeah, that thing we could do is we could tear everything out, cemented and turf it.
Yeah, then it becomes a scapegoat.
We could put it all, we could put it with older turfs to make sure that we fit within the, I'm kidding aside, I'm kidding aside, I know we have to do something there, I meet with Ivan at nine o'clock tomorrow.
Thank you, okay, any other questions?
Now, suggestions?
Bids? Okay, I made a motion, I was second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Where?